Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the public hearings. Open with our public hearings. If you've noticed, if you have a copy of this, the proposed change to zoning ordinance regarding timber harvesting, if anyone is here for that, that has been removed from our agenda and from our hearing tonight.
Mineral extraction.
I'm sorry, the mineral extraction, that was removed after the publication went out saying that it would be tonight. So if you hear about that and you would like to leave because you have dinner waiting or something better to do, we understand. If you'd like to stay, please do, we're glad to have you.
So timber harvesting is not going to be discussed?
Timber harvesting is, gravel is not.
Is, gravel is not. And I'm here, you're here for timber harvesting?
Yes ma'am.
I thought so. So. This is. You have that. Hold up two minutes. So if you are. Do you have the notes on that, Brenda?
Timber harvesting.
Timber harvesting. I'll take, I already set my notes for you. Take me two minutes. Okay, well, it's, um, a full belief. She's good in that. I have a full belief. But when you use this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, you have the definitions there. Yeah. I think that's right number four.
Is this for me?
Yep. Right. Should be short. Should be. On the green sheets. Same thing. The fifth week would like to get going. So, on the timber harvesting, for some time now, we have been out of step with the state, and the state has asked us to be in compliance. We thought we were, last year, we were not. So, we have these proposed amendments to the ordinance relative to timber harvesting. And honestly, it, in Article Two, it lists uses that are not permitted. It, and just about everything is struck from that. Article Three, definitions, and everything is struck out completely from that, for us to be in compliance with the state. It's their wish, and that's where we stand. So, questions about it, what could we hear from you? Yep.
Does anybody care to explain why and what's happening here? Why is the state asking us to do this? And there's a reason for that. Now would be the time to hear it.
Yeah, what they're trying to do is statewide standards.
Yep.
So somebody doing timber harvesting in Kittery and Fort Kent will have the same rules versus different rules in every separate town. Very similar to a statewide building code, so the builders know it's the same book the whole way. If we're not in compliance with the state timber harvesting standards, we will not get any help from the Forest Service. If we have a violation cut, we cannot call them, it's all locally handled. And it's, a true timber harvest, forest violation is way beyond my scope of knowledge for that. We'd have to have a forester come in and work with us on that. And in the board's opinion, I think we all agreed, and we did last year when we thought we were going into compliance with it, that it makes sense to have the same standards uniform throughout the state.
So these standards are applied by the Forest Service, basically?
Basically, yes.
So if I had a complaint about somebody's, the way timbers being harvested, I would call the district forester?
Correct.
Is that correct?
If you called now, and it's extremely confusing how they did, there's an option one and an option two, but then when you look at the standards, there's an option one and an option two as well, too. So it took us a while to figure out what the options meant, because we were looking at the standards, which was really in the law where we want to be in compliance with the states. And we were in compliance last year for a little bit, and then they looked and they kicked us out. So half of the state websites have us in compliance, and the other half does not.
So this will put us in complete compliance?
That's what we hope.
And that's what we're hoping.
We thought that last year, too.
Well, I know. I've taken the positive, and if this will put us in compliance, the state will let us know. But right now, your option is call the forest.
And there was a law a few years ago, maybe even ten, that said, they were headed this way, and after 353 towns of the 900 were in compliance, it was automatic and it was going to turn that. They'd kind of walked away from that, and they're just waiting for the towns to come in compliance on their own.
Okay. So what about harvesting timber in what we call a resource protection area? That's also a kind of...
The Forest Service does not have resource protection, they don't have shoreline zoning, they have, when you're looking at a timber harvest, there is no change to the use, it's a timber harvest. You're going in, you're cutting a tree, you're leaving, there's no soil disturbance, done properly, it's a simple harvest and everything grows back. It's when they, until you get a 50-acre clear cut, the state really doesn't get involved with it. And using best management practice, everything grows back fairly well when it's harvested properly. There is a wetland, they'll call a wetland, with a limited buffer down there, but most of it is all harvestable, at a certain time of year when the ground's frozen and stuff like that.
So there's no local restriction to harvesting timber along the Sandman Falls? In my case, I have some really big pines down there that are going to end up in the river if they were going to harvest it.
Currently, that would be resource protection, conditional use through the planning board, but where we thought we were going state standards last year, we haven't had a lot of foresters come in and apply for those, but we've been allowing it to go through the normal notification through the state, usually forester involved, and you'd be all set.
Thank you.
So we're hoping this is somewhat of deregulation?
Yeah.
At the county level. Well, we hoped that last year, but...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else with anything they'd like to share on timber harvesting? Thank you very much. We should go on to Joe, Mr. Sawtelle, 11th Street, map 147, lot double three dash double one, extractive use application. Please tell us your name.
Joe Stanley with LimePro Land Surveying, representing the Sawtelle Family Trust down on 11th Street, which, you know, most of you probably know is kind of just south of the Acton Fairgrounds off of Route 109. Basically, we have applied for a conditional use permit to the planning board to sort of help wrap up to the town satisfaction, the project that's been ongoing there the last, I don't know, I'd say three or four years. Basically, Mr. Sawtelle, who owns this house up here and this garage, had asked this contractor to take out a considerable amount of fill and flatten this area and create, you know, move it out to a lawn area, a field area. So after a couple sidewalks with the planning board and a few meetings where we've gotten to the point, you know, where we're getting close to an agreement on, I think, you know, a plan here that will lead everybody's satisfaction, obviously, there's still a few meetings. But, you know, basically, at this point in time, you know, the area's pretty flat, most of the, most of all the trees in the center of the lot have been taken out a few years back, and, you know, at this point, the project has been loamed and seeded and kind of reclaimed, you know, between this magenta line and Route 109, this area over here is still open. So basically, we've shown some proposed contours which, you know, match the town's requirement of a two-and-a-half, one slope, to get the slope back where it needs to be, and then we propose some, you know, additional light grading which would, it's tough to see with the little blue drainage arrows, we're sort of trying to funnel any, most of all of the stormwater into the center of this parcel, make it a little bit deeper there, and it's basically a sand where the water should permeate quite quickly into the, into the ground, but the focus is to, you know, as this area starts to revegetate with lawn and whatnot, you know, try to keep as much of the water as we can onsite rather than heading out into the road or onto any neighbor's properties. Basically, at this point in time, we're proposing, once, you know, everything's loamed and seeded, you know, a kind of a line of, a line of trees to be planted every 20 feet along the road to kind of break up that open space a little bit, and then, you know, down towards this end of the property with the predominantly westerly wind that comes through here, we can, we've added now two rows of trees just to help there's a windbreak with anything heading in that direction, too. That's basically the gist of the project, is, right?
Excuse me, can you just point out where 12th Street is on that map?
12th Street would be up off the page here.
Okay.
Up in this area.
Okay.
The windows of the GIS that works the way you want, he's probably going to show you that in a second.
They hooked our generator up today, so we didn't have power till four, and we lost internet and phone until this weekend.
Everything is very in this. So we have a generator, so we won't use our loot, our electricity, but, but.
People at home don't want to miss any of this action.
They're to stay nice with the best TV.
We have dial-up.
AOL dial-up, okay. And, there we go. We're in Acton. We're getting the rose. There's 11. Oops, it's here, it's still being, it's just on.
So here's the project site here, 11th Street, 12th...
There's 11th Street here, 12th Street is up here.
It's down by the other parts. Thank you very much. Yep, yep.
I think the only thing you missed by, Joe, was this existing berm, all stays as it is. So it won't look any different from the highway that it currently does.
Yeah, so what you're speaking to, there's an existing berm in this area here of, and much of it was loamed, I'm sure there's some sandy gravel material underneath it, too, but it's basically acting as a visual barrier and, you know, sound barrier of sorts, you know, along the wind from the 109 direction, and one of the board's requests, you know, there's already probably, you know, four to six-foot trees growing on that pile as-is, and the board has asked that we leave that in place to help, you know, protect the area.
Anyone else? Questions, concerns? We're all set here, then we shall close the support of public hearing. Thank you, Joe. And now, Mr. Boise, if you would like to come up and join us, please. And Mark Boise, Route 109, map 2411, double oh six dash oh two, site and review, retail storage facility. We officially open the public hearing on that.
Do you have any more?
Do you have them?
Yeah, that's the, that's the recently revised.
Which no one has in my previous number 12?
Yes.
I don't think we got them. The subject is, that's my fault, I lost track of what you got. Remember the topic, I don't have time. Mark, you'll be surprised, my feet are long on the dining room now, I'm going to take...
Wonderful. I've made it to the big time.
Next time you're watching HGTV, you'll love seeing that.
The long and the short of it is that the company that we own has outgrown our home facilities, and we were able to purchase this land in Acton. And what you see basically is our warehouse and showroom office area coming off of Route 109, just up the street from where we were looking at.
Mark, if you'd tell me what your business is, that might be...
Yes, sorry. It's called All Nine Yards Aluminum Docks and Property Maintenance. So we do property maintenance in between being very busy taking care of people's docks on the links all over your county. And I said we've gotten too busy, so we purchased this piece of property, and now we're looking to put this warehouse, showroom and office space that will allow us to move everything off of my property in Chapling over to this property right here, so I can have my life back.
How big is the building?
The, this section right here is 102 feet long by 81 feet wide, and it's basically a warehouse, it would be for our equipment as well as our docks in winter, unless it's full of folks' RVs, boats, cars, motorcycles, jet skis, whatever they, you know, whatever people want to rent space for, we would be using that warehouse for that as well. But at the same, at the same time, it'll be for whatever docks we don't sell, which is not very many by the end of the year, we'll put those inside as well as probably has our equipment in there as well during winter. The front section right here is a showroom, office, reception area with a break room, a public bathroom, and a bathroom for the guys who work, separate from the public bathroom. We have our parking right here with handicap, this is in front of the building, that little box right there is just basically a six-by-10 little pitched roof overhead so people can walk in the doors without getting wet. It'll be finished off. The building is from Morton, Morton is a, is a national company. In October, if everything goes well, the building gets delivered, they put it up, and it's done in two months. So they have their own crews that are used to doing this.
You've been working with your engineers, not only with the building but the site plan to calculate the stormwater?
Yes.
You're working on the detention pond in this area to mitigate all the stormwater on the site?
Yep.
DOT has granted the entrance permit here for you?
Yep. You have that copy?
Yep.
The last detail is this, oops, sorry, Ken. Is this detention area? And unfortunately, engineers are extremely busy right now, and we'll have that detail next week. That's the final detail the planning board was looking at for us to give to them, spots all the detail they wanted on the property, for the building and the grounds and the water runoff and everything else. Any questions?
Thank you. So this is a pretty big building. I hope the board will consider restricting its use to not burning marijuana, for instance. Have you ever given any thought to that? You think it's funny?
I do. Why would I do that?
Why do you, what about the person you sell it to?
Because it's in the plans, the planning board...
I'm asking the board to consider restricting...
They have to come back to the planning, if Mr. Boise sells, they have to come back to the planning board.
For change of use?
For change, for any, anything, they have to come back here. So that would fall right back at us, not at Mr. Boise. We would not want that.
Are there any other restrictions the board is going to place on the use of this building?
You may want to run down those notes for...
I was going to try to.
Yeah.
So if you look at, making him make it for you.
I know, I appreciate that.
So number four, if a change of ownership occurs or a change of use is planned, the conditional use permit must be reviewed by the planning board. So that's in the plan itself already.
Okay.
Number three also reiterates that out.
Yeah.
What's number three say?
This plan applies only to conditions existing as of the date shown hereon.
Thank you.
Five is just the Knox box system for five departments to gain access. Six is the lot coverage to make sure we're underneath, it's a 40-acre lot to begin with. Seven's looking at making sure the fuel and batteries were moved out of the boats so we don't have a hazard or a spill out there. Noise level is going to be down to eight decibels during the day, fifty at night. No bulk chemicals stored on the site, no small engine repair, and just basically, they'll be cleaned off the boats, hosed off. It's not a marine up small engine repair detail center or anything like that, he's selling docks and storing a little bit of stuff in site. He's going to maintain a vegetated buffer on the front, obviously on Route 109, he wants some exposure from the cows going back, but yet still keeping it a rural characteristic. Those are what we've had so far, and a lot of the others are just designed into it during the TSC meetings we've had, and...
Any other concerns, questions? Mark, anything else you'd like to share?
I'm not used to this, so I don't know.
Public speaking, we don't grade you on that.
We're excited, we're excited to be enacted, you know, our last bid to try to do something like this went pretty bad.
Outside of town.
Outside of town, huh?
Not enacted. Yes, sorry. Anyway, so we're pretty excited about this, we've been trying to get a new facility for three years, had two different spots, it didn't work out, and it looks like this one is working out, so we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any more questions they'd like to ask before we close this part of the hearing? Given none, we shall close Mr. Boise's public hearing, and that ends our public hearing for the season. And thank you all very much. Thank you for coming. Everybody, before we call a regular meeting to order, I have one question, and I'm not sure what is procedurally the right way to go about it. Is marijuana legal in Maine? I thought it was. Do we know if it is or isn't?
It changes day to day, it's like, so we look at it as an agricultural use, if it's being sold, it's commercial.
Okay.
We're having, it's down to when we issue a shed permit, we're saying no conditional use, because you can buy a shed all set up to grow, and then just delivering to plug it in.
Right.
So Brett has been chasing one for about a month now, maybe six weeks.
Six weeks.
And it's really hard to track that down, but we treat it as it's agricultural.
Okay.
So we asked somebody the other day how big their farm was, and he said it was a three-bedroom farm. So they've taken the ranch, gotten rid of the bedrooms, and are growing in it. So that's how they're sizing their farms now.
That's how they're sizing. It falls under agriculture as far as the state is concerned, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good problem for the state.
And the caregivers, I think, because you used to be able to say, these are my five people I'm a caregiver for, and then five minutes later, these are my five people, and they keep changing. So it's a huge shell game for us to keep up to, and, but I don't think that applies to either unconditional use or something.
Mr. Boise, and this does not have anything to do with your thing, and I wouldn't want you to think that, I just, it's unfortunate, it's one of those things we have to keep up with and know about, and...
Of all the questions that I thought I might take today, that was not one of them.
That wasn't one.
It's too funny.
Yeah, keep wearing the green sweatshirt, that's all. Okay, I would like to call the planning board meeting of May 16 to order, and we have everyone here, so, one, two, three, four, sorry, except for Tom. And, that's Tom Passion, our longtime member, who's our vice chairman, and due to family circumstances is unable to be with us, and we hope to see him soon. So, we are all here, we have a form, so let's go. Approval of minutes of May 2nd. Can I do both, or Brett them all?
One thing.
Yep.
It says I was absent, I wasn't.
Are you sure?
I even seconded something.
We'll fix that. Sorry I wasn't. So after Wesley, for lunch, but no one wasn't. Okay.
I'm only using seconded.
Motion is moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes as read? Okay, old minutes. Joe, come on down.
So we look at it as an agricultural use. If it's being sold, it's commercial.
Okay.
We're having... It's down to when we issue a shed permit. We're saying no conditional use, because you can buy a shed all set up to grow and then just deliver it and plug it in. So Brett has been chasing one for about a month now, maybe six weeks. And it's really hard to track that down, but we treat it as it's agricultural.
Okay.
So we asked somebody the other day how big their farm was, and he said it was a three-bedroom farm. So they've taken the ranch, gotten rid of the bedrooms, and are growing in it. So that's how they're sizing their farms.
That's how they're sizing it. It falls under agriculture as far as the state is concerned, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good problem for the state.
And the caregivers, I think, because you used to be able to say, these are my five people I'm a caregiver for. And then five minutes later, these are my five people, and they keep changing. So it's a huge shell game for us to keep up to and... But I don't think that applies to either unconditional use or something.
Mr. Boise, this does not have anything to do with your thing, and I wouldn't want you to think that. I just, it's unfortunate. It's one of those things we have to keep up with and know about and...
Of all the questions that I thought I might take today, that was not one of them.
That wasn't one.
It's too funny.
Yeah, keep wearing the green sweatshirt, that's all. Okay. I would like to call the planning board meeting of May 16 to order. And we have everyone here, so... One, two, three, four, sorry, except for Tom. And that's Tom Passion, our longtime member, who's our vice chairman, and due to family circumstances is unable to be with us. And we hope to see him soon. So we are all here. We have a form, so let's go. Approval of minutes of May 2nd. Can I do a quick read them all?
One thing.
Yep.
It says I was absent, I wasn't.
Are you sure?
I even seconded something.
We'll fix that.
Sorry I wasn't.
So after Wesley for a month, but no, I wasn't. Okay.
Motion is moved and seconded.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes as read? Okay, old minutes. Joe, come on down. If he keeps this up, you're gonna have a little competition on my dining room wall. You share, or at least have more.
We got a big dining room wall. We live outside the shoreline zone.
Well, years ago.
I'd like to know what the code is. Just like, yeah, structural integrity. Ten percent covered on walls.
So this one's conditional use. Didn't have the findings of fact in the book for conditional use. But I think with both our public hearings, we've been through it several times. I think we've got all the notes, what we wanted on the plans.
So since I was here last, not to slow you down, but I have added the note nine, as Gavin suggested, it just further states, and I've re-spaced the trees, added some trees, so they're twenty feet apart now. I also reiterate that if less than eighty percent of them survive the next five years from something, then that will need to be replanted and taken care of. And then, you know, reviewing the video, it was suggested perhaps white or red pines might be even fit for this area. So I called them up specifically on the plan, and I've just stated that native trees should be used, which is suitable for these soils. And if, you know, if somebody tries to deviate from either of those two species, they at least need to clear it with can and make sure that he is on board with what they've chosen.
So we have... I know it's hard to read that one on your computer.
This is called enforcement, that's the same. I just like a job security.
If anybody would like larger texts, I have two extra copies here inside of the slide over there.
No, that's okay. So we have...
I think we've got it all.
I think we've answered just about everything on there. And if we look into checklist, you have a blue book, everybody? Is the new blue book?
Should be in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but... That should be usually for priming. I'm not sure I put that on there. I don't know. Is it in the blue book? I don't know. It probably should be in there. Yeah.
The items I have on page eighty-nine of the zoning ordinance.
What should I have to pay to get all those fancy blue books for the office so I know ahead of time?
What he's gonna ask me. You have to know somebody that would.
It's still really raw.
It's all right.
He can make some changes.
Maybe you could review it for us. Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, but you know what's gonna happen? Then he's gonna start lending. He'll lend it out. He'll have a lending library, and he'll be calling up Mr. Boise, hey, five bucks, I got one of the books.
Just like Ken stated a minute ago, for me, it's job security. If I keep the blue book to myself, and I look good answering all the questions before they come up. Well, wanna use my service?
That's true. That's true. If you look back on the application for conditional use, we do have... I'll have one of those, and we do have... We have it on.
Standards.
We have the standards. And I think that is in the blue book here. Yeah, it is. And it's on, well, they're not numbered, but page two. You know, six point six, point three, point seven, standard application for conditional use. And it is A through M. So if you want to go through that, yes? Okay. And... Yeah.
Want me to make a copy?
I think Darwin has a checklist.
Well, I have my original copy.
Oh, he only has his...
I have a copy of the copy for him.
Yeah. Yes, use this one.
So just that page?
Yeah, that's the page. Well, there might be a copy, may have, might have been there.
He's just gonna put this next, coffee, go to, keep wanting.
Okay. Okay. As far as the standards applicable. To be the responsibility to the applicant to demonstrate most used meets all following criteria, which should approve the application unless it makes written findings that one or more of these criteria are not that meant. So the use will not have an adverse impact on the spawning ground of fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Proper erosion control measures will be taken to prevent such impact. Okay? True or yes will be...
You might need true or false.
I think true looks better, doesn't it?
I think true.
Otherwise, sometimes it's a double negative.
Oh, okay, no double negatives. So, true?
True.
Okay. B, the use will conserve short comer and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. This is not within the shoreline zone. So this is, we call this one NA. Keep it good for you, okay? The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Use is allowed by zoning and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. True? Traffic access to the site meets the standard contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standard in this ordinance. Access to the state is on private road and will not cause traffic congestion. It's true, but it's not applicable.
Well, they're still going in and out of there with trucks and equipment. It is more use than receiving before the project.
Right, but it's...
I still think it's true.
Okay. I have no...
It meets the standards.
Yeah, it meets the standards. I have no problem with that. The site design is in accordance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Site is not within a flood zone and will not create such a hazard.
True.
True, thank you. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Not applicable for this use.
Yeah, because that's covered with stormwater drainage. True.
Okay. So we'll say true. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazard material has been made.
Yeah, they don't store...
They don't store anything.
Right.
Are you thinking it'll be all loomed and revegetated by the end of this year, eh? Easily?
Yes, I certainly think by the fall.
Yeah.
And so... Do you want to go with it? It's not applicable?
I think it's an A.
I would go with an A myself, but... Stormwater drainage system capable of handling twenty-five-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Final grading will retain stormwater onsite, which will show, which shall, should reduce runoff below the current levels. True? Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. Proper erosion control measures and best management practices will be utilized. There's adequate water supply to meet the demands... To meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Not applicable.
Joe, do you know if there's a spigot at the garage? Just an easy access.
Like a hose spigot?
Yeah.
I believe that there is.
Get water to muddy those trees in.
Yes. I believe I saw one this winter, but I wouldn't want to count on it.
Say that's true.
Provision for buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from determin... I'm not even talking anymore. Determinational features of the development such as noise, glare, fume, dust, odors, and the like.
True. The planting of the trees along the road.
Right. All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Agreed? That's a... That's a yes, not a true, correct? Making you...
If you want it to be.
Well, he has to agree to it.
I can say true. If that works. When the question is asked.
Applicable.
Applicable? Yeah, okay. Archaeological... I can't speak.
NA.
NA, thank you. That's it, it is over.
We always have told them NA that before you started.
Archaeological and historical resources. So any dinosaur bones you find?
Say, if there were some, they probably would have seen them already.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
I'd rather have sand.
So, having gone through this, I think it is... Now, do we have any discussion from the board? Anyone? Would you all do me a favor and take a look on the notes on this thing? On this, I know they're hard, but they're small.
I just haven't saw my notes.
Just...
Say, if anybody...
It's too big, it probably isn't...
He's got a pair of hands.
No sense in these things.
I just would like you to take a look at these, because they're not a little big.
I'm not gonna have to read them.
They're some big, big ones. If there's anything missing or not missing or...
One, two, three, really don't matter. Four doesn't matter.
Keep talking, because...
These are some of the most important. No, they're just plain references. It's all just survey, every two guys often come back.
That's it. Sorry, Joe.
Without all those, I wouldn't even know where this place was.
Exactly. You'd be on the wrong lot.
Yeah. You'd be across the street at Mr. Boise's planting trees. Oh, my gosh.
Years ago, I spent five to my style on that property doing the original land, basically.
I thought you were gonna say on the wrong lot. Really, it comes down to eight and nine as far as where we're at now.
Yeah.
I don't know if there was a topsoil concern, but is it weighed out anywhere in the topsoil?
I hadn't made a specific... I haven't put anything specific about it. I just remember onsite, there was a standard thrown out there. Billy said he was gonna put two, three more inches than what even the standard was. I don't have those numbers, but if you want, if there's a number you want to put as a condition of the permit, that's fine as long as it's reasonable. This was a word, dog.
Yeah. I'll write in for you.
Normally, four, but he was heavily six to eight is what he had going on.
Right. Are you all pretty much happy with what you've read? All right, then I would do the same thing. That's what I like, I can look over at the computer.
I would say, who'll read it, actually?
So, that being the case, I will entertain a motion approving said plans.
I vote, I... You didn't say it, come on.
Oh, yeah, which alternate is voting tonight?
Which alternate is voting tonight? You voted last. You should be voting tonight, so... Sorry.
I will wait.
Could you reference the plans, you know, from the application based on the plans of May sixteen, whatever the date is on the plans, that would be helpful.
Are you gonna approve it? Well, it was actually from the original day, February seven.
This final plan?
From the final plan. Approve the application. Approve the application.
Submitted May sixteen, twenty nineteen.
Perfect. Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we want to have something down, have the topsoil numbers?
I think we have it in the ordinance that it's a minimum of four, because we've always questioned, is that the day they put it out or when we come back three or four years later? Because it's four inches when they put it out, and it just, it compacts a little and then the snow.
The first year.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other considerations, questions? Motion is permitted and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you. Couple of big plans, and we got to sign.
Yep. Big plans.
Get this one off the rack and make one for the next one. I don't, I mean, I can if you guys would like. I'm used to doing recorded plans just for like subdivisions, condos, that type of thing. Conditional uses have been more in-house, in-house plan sets, but I can do it more if you'd like.
If it was a gravel pit that was gonna be open for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, I'd say record it, but I think by the time you record it, we get it back. So I think with this one here, I'm okay to...
Okay, we're okay to sign this.
Just sign this one, and we'll do, sign two copies, you people, and we'll need one.
And I would suggest that actually, we're gonna take a minute and sign them now. Because that way, Joe?
Do you have Sharpies, Joe? You should do.
Well, I have Sharpies with my lawyer. Regular copies, a regular pen.
Is it just regular pen?
Yeah.
We have somewhere else.
This one's purple.
It's purple, you don't want that.
I have a blind... This will be a good one. I will sign my name and leave the pen there.
I just want to say, Ken, now that both of these, both of us have had this on our face tonight, it says right on it, that void exposure laser radiation is emitted from this aperture.
I hear movement at all.
Now you read it.
Really, what it does is kind of causes all this, that's really what it does.
I'm playing with the ears. Well, now that laser tag, it even works then.
Cats.
The kids, the laser cats.
Yeah, that's so funny when they do that. Okay. Somebody go up next. Ah, okay. I think it's every other week, I think it's supposed to be quarterly. It feels that way. Hey, I do mine to the taxpayer.
I may call you the right question just so I know, am I, is that something they don't feel the current owners would still have?
I've got it. Yes. Yes.
Because the people that own it now, the blockers, are trying to say that your family had it right away, but some stuff. That's most of them. That's why I'm asking, that's something I would.
Five names on one, four on the other.
Excuse me? We've got five names on one and four on the other.
We got audited. Nothing makes it five on the line. Criticized.
I've got two more coming.
Come on.
Okay, next report is in July. And then after that. See the show in Shore.
Oh, I was given this. Oh, I'll share it with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're just going to give them a minute there to get, to get done and then. We're not yet. Don't juice us. We're not done, sorry. We're just here observing. We're here just listening. So Mark, why don't you come on down and we will. Please don't die.
This one's a site review. Most of that we've all been through. You can do the conditional use checklist, but I think that's all. Unless the board has any concerns.
That's your understanding. That means something to me because you guys are involved with the court proceeding. I think we wrote the checklist out. Outside of the, we're in the applicant guide. As close to it as it is.
Correct. I like it.
I like my, I like the word.
Don't let the dog eat that one.
In case nobody knew, that is a dog ate his own book.
His dog ate his own book.
Why did it wait? That instigated the dog to eat the book.
All right, now, now. We have, old business is.
Just so Max caught up to speed.
So Marcus.
Marijuana question. He was on the committee for marijuana in town and it must have been a 200-page report he had came up with for how to grow. And I just, no use in wanting, I knew the use of it. I never thought of it at all, really, that that was even a question, but.
It's online if you want to read it.
I don't have a hard time falling asleep, so.
And I mean, I'm sorry, but from what I know, of all people.
It's a good job, I have no issue with it. Just surprise.
Surprise us all.
Okay, Mr. Boise, his latest map. We've had our site logs. We have, this is 109 storage facility and sales room for docks and storage for, you mentioned cars. That was the only thing that kind of perked my ears up.
What?
When you were speaking during the.
The reality is for boats and jet skis. We don't want to turn our rental fees if we have.
No, well, I will, I will give you, I'll give you an example. For many years, I had an MG Midget and I used to look for a place to store it. We've got to get the gas on them. Because those rules would apply across the board, whether it's a, somebody's, you know, Harley or somebody's Spyder or something. I mean.
That would be something we obviously tell the owner, listen, we're going to have empty tank, you're going to empty tank.
That'd be in your rental agreement and rent the space out.
Yes. I mean, it would be in your rental agreement because that would be.
And that's a note on here. Is it a note?
Is it?
For two?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's number seven, but it just says boat.
It says boats.
Yeah.
Anything and everything that we would do, we would do the same thing. Does the board want a copy of the rental agreement once he has one drafted? Because we're probably looking at it next year or something like that.
It wouldn't hurt to have one on file, you know? And I know you're not going to have it next week. We're not asking you for something you haven't even, you know?
That's right.
Thought of yet, but because number seven does say just boats and, you know, it's, when they had that fire except for that lawnmower, you know, it's stored in there. So it's looking out for your property too.
So if all you need is a, if all you need is a copy of a rental agreement, that's no issue. Otherwise, I take the cars off the table if it becomes a problem. You know what I mean?
Yes, but if that's, if someone wants you to, it's very easy to empty a car tank.
I guess my question is, the application is for boats?
Originally, it was for anything we could rent.
But, I mean, on the other.
It was, I think I had said RVs and boats. We use general for beards, like all storage equipment. It's something like that. And as long as it doesn't cause a can of.
Well, I. From my perspective, what I've listened to through this whole process, the only thing I've heard anything about was boats.
Are you going to call in boats and if you see a need for car and RV storage, come back and just modify the plan? Yes, but you have what you're finding.
I'm just trying to figure out how to describe what it is. It's the page in the page board they're at for the year. The fourth paragraph down, there would also be a storage facility attached to the showroom building consisting of two sections, smaller section for equipment and a larger section rented for storage of boats, cars, motorhomes, et cetera.
Okay, so you do have it in there in your application? You don't have it on here. That's, that's the only thing. So I.
The plan is the document we go with.
The plan is what we go with though. Which, sorry to say.
So Ken, yes. You'll be okay with the boats now if you see a need for.
I'll just come back.
Yep. Do you see any issue with me coming back and having to revise?
Is it, does it mean having cars coming in anytime soon?
Again, I only said the cars, the RVs, motorcycles, whatever. I only said that because we don't want to, especially in the beginning, we don't want to give up any kind of rental income. We'll take what we can until we can get full boats. Because that's the, that's really the plan is to really do boats.
And everything is, is all green lights. When would you even think your door would open for the first season?
I would, I'm guessing it would have to be next year. I just don't see how it could even be this year. And it would be the fall before anyone's even storing, so you, right? So you're a year and a half away.
Fifteen, sixteen months.
Yeah, so you're, you're talking close to 2021, actually, to that point, 2020?
Right. The end of 2020.
The end of 2020, maybe.
I just want clarification and then in the application, it says this, will it show it on the site plan? No.
Not as it is. And the site plan's the rule.
On that?
Yeah. What's on that is the rule. And.
So what on that, you couldn't do paths and stuff at this point?
Yeah. If, if it ended up on this because calculations will be given to us next week, which is a minor miracle, we wouldn't get it that quick. So they got the calculations on here and I just add, you know.
Could you put exactly?
Which, what we have on?
What you have right here.
In the application.
In the application? If you use the same verbiage, there's no question.
Yeah, but what page and paragraph did you say that was on?
It's, it's the page before the map. It's like a email or something.
We don't have like an email of that.
No, I have it. It's in my truck actually.
I mean, it just eliminates any gray area that's my point, you know?
And usually we look at these that when somebody's looking at it, none of us are here. It's a whole different group and they can look and say, here's permission to store campers and motorcycles and.
Exactly.
I mean, I have no issues with him storing motorcycles.
For his protection, we're cleaning it up a little.
It really, it really does, you know, two of us are gone, three of us are gone, and there'll be four here and it's like, what are you doing? He said boats and it's like, and no, it's, it's, this is what it is, so. So as long as you have to have that other, the numbers put on, right?
Then if not, then I'll come back and get the revision, but I'll try to get it on right.
So was that just adding into note number seven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what about the other notes, like 11?
Yeah.
There's no reason for us to wash collars.
Because you never need those and anything else.
And again, I see what you're saying.
What use in rentals?
Well, you might as well lay it before you put it in your building. I don't know what it looks like.
Usually verbiage is motor vehicle. It's a vehicle moved by a motor. That's watercraft, snowmobiles, cars, trucks, RVs.
And number 10?
And motor vehicles would cover that?
11? We talked about number 11?
Yeah.
Any stored vehicle?
What's that?
Number 11. Any stored vehicle. So we're going to consider a boat a vehicle. Making sure we don't have.
You take the order out, so now down to canoes and kayaks.
Paddleboard, so I'm not holding you too.
I just wanted that the dog could be calling that was all, so there's no interpretation, no gray area.
Something I don't like, but I don't want to have to come back here.
Just have to know them by names though.
Yes.
So number 11.
Is number 10 okay that it is? Say any boat repair or anything else?
It says.
It's small engine repair or commercial boat repair.
Yeah.
So that kind of covers everything.
He's not going to do any of that.
I'm not doing any of that.
No.
No intent whatsoever.
But that, that really, having it both ways, small engine or commercial boat are there, covers.
Everything that would go in there, in essence.
Right.
So number 11 says, well, only if it goes off with clean water. So you're not going to use any cleaning agents, but the intent of.
Correct. That's what the authority had suggested, so I hope you are version.
A little power wash does a good job. So, and there are any other questions? Concerns?
I would like to put a simple thing in it because it says like initially our apartment area will be gravel, so if the apartment area is paved, it, it at least notify it can so you can have your stormwater, at least have someone tell you if your stormwater system is going to be adequate for having a paved yard instead of a gravel yard.
Yeah, well, that could be a long time from now.
Right, just because you have it right here in this.
I have a successful.
It just says initially our apartment area will be gravel, so gives the idea that you could pave it eventually and then.
I mean, you'll have a paved entrance. DOT is looking for.
Paved entrance.
Yeah, just so you can pull in and out.
That's part of the, that's part of the, the DOT entrance.
Yeah. Yeah. And you're going to want that anyway.
Oh, we would have done it anyways.
If you have a rainy season like it's been, that would be.
Not fun.
Be terrible. Yeah. See them all lined up on 109.
Like fair season?
Like fair season. And I might ask you not to put a dock out when it's fair season, say nine yards here.
Well, we have the fair, so we won't.
With the big arrow. Okay. That works, that works. All right. So where are we going to stand then now? I think we've got these minor things that we need to have. Are there other concerns other than what we've talked about tonight?
I have a, just a quick one about the type of work people would be doing in the yard there. Because you're mainly working with aluminum docks. You're going to be cutting these things to length for your clients.
We don't make the docks. We buy them already, already assembled. All we do is stack them in their sizes. And when we sell them, we just load them on a trailer and bring them to the customer or they come in with their trailer and we load it on their trailer. There's no, there's no manufacturing of any sort going on in the yard. Nor do we want to. We've got enough to do.
Sort of like Avon, you pick the colored lipstick you want.
And then it gets sent to you.
And it gets sent to you?
Yes.
Okay. Works.
Could you have that checklist you wanted to go through?
The one in the zoning ordinance is conditional use. So we've been, this is site review here and I think at the last meeting, meeting before, we went through the list, plus the TRC meetings we had with Mr. Boise prior to the meetings, we've been through the list several times. And I mean, you can look at the conditional use standards, but I think everything's been exhausted. We've talked about a couple of minor changes. Big thing would be the stormwater coming back through the engineers next week. I called corner post today to verify. He's hoping to have it tomorrow. And then, once he has it, he'll put that information on this map in the blue area. And I'll, the minute I have it next week, I will get it here. I would think possibly thinking of a conditional approval.
I would think possibly thinking of a conditional approval pending updating the two lines and the stormwater plan. So at least he can maybe sleep better tonight knowing he's got a big step approved.
Get through to a weeks lot.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting, yeah. But this would allow you, I think, with the...
It's really three weeks, this is five.
Yeah, because we got five weeks this month. So our next meeting isn't for three weeks, so with a conditional approval, that might help you even going forward with your financial side of it, that word.
Is that a, is that a form I get from you, or what is it?
No, I think a site plan review would be, the plan will be signed.
Right.
I don't know if we'd actually even issue a site plan, like a conditional use permit, because usually all the conditions are, they're all in the plan itself. But that will open the door for me to start looking at the permitting side and go building permit with you too as well, while we're waiting in the meantime for the next, because that's probably your next thing you really wants, to build the permit.
Maybe a copy of the minutes, would they accept that?
I'll take them.
You'll take them, huh?
I'll take them.
Yeah. So... First of all, let's go to the board. Would we entertain, has anybody put forward to entertain a conditional site plan review approval? The two conditions are the updated site plan with the measurements on it and the two additional notes.
Do you, the notes are additionally changed to modified notes?
Modified notes. And the additional notes, they are modified notes. So that would be what we would be voting if, and that would be conditional approval. We still have to see the final updated plan, exactly. But we could, we could go forward, Mr. Boise could go forward with a copy of the minutes for it. And it does mean it opens a door for building permits and...
I think that's reasonable.
So... Do you hear a motion to do?
Kenya?
We've moved on, sorry.
I know, you know. I know, I know. I talked Sunday School for 10 years, I know what kids aren't paying attention.
See what happens.
And I hope you realize how serious we are down here, that we try to, you know.
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept, conditional acceptance on the site plan review of the whole nine yards dated, when was this one done?
It's going to be dated, like, June, whoever the next meeting is.
Oh, my God, June, June 6th. June 6th. Right. Would the two, would the, it was updated, updated site plan, the measurements, what would it be? Those are the, what do you mean, are they...
More calculations?
The calculations and the two modified notes, numbers seven and 11. I'm not going to repeat it, so for a second.
Oh, that was your, okay, I see.
Okay. Any, any questions? Someone made a motion, and which is very rare for me, and Yoli?
Can I ask a question then?
Yes. We haven't voted yet, but yes.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, I don't... Oh, yeah, would somebody make a motion?
Can I just say so moved?
That's good. But I, as a chairman, I should not have made the motion.
So can I make the motion?
Yes, you can.
Officially, yes. Repeat what you said, you just say so moved? Someone else can say it.
Somebody else can say that, so. Very good. And you have that, and the motion was made by Yoli. I'm glad.
And we hope this video is confusing enough to everybody tonight. Everyone stop watching.
Chairman can do what she wants.
Except for chairman.
Chairman can do what he wants. All right, any further discussion? Let's get some, you know, this is almost the time we get a little punchy after 8 o'clock. So any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'd like to take a vote, all in favor? And all opposed? An abstention?
I guess I could abstain, I'd like to see the stormwater management on there, but I think it's fine what you guys are doing.
So it's 401?
Yeah.
You have our tacit approval. We'll, it usually takes a little bit of time for our minutes, but, and they won't be... And they won't be approved?
Till the 6th.
Till the 6th, but we'll send you a draft of them. That's okay, right? Sending a draft. We approved last meeting this one, but you can have a draft, it will say draft on it. And you will, I would imagine, call them tomorrow and say, I have two more sentences to put on the plan. Yeah, and that should help get your, I mean, see if we can move this, you only started in February.
Okay. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Now, can you mention we can start on the permitting process, looking at the plans, whatever? Talk to me about how that works?
Middle of next week.
Last time I didn't sit with you, or?
Let me take a look at it, give a call Wednesday, Thursday-ish. And I can tell you where we're at on it. Awesome, so I think next time, two full size, I don't think we need any little ones. And then we'll sign one, and we'll sign two.
We'll sign two, you get one, we get one.
They can put it up on your wall in the office. Something like that.
Well, is this going to go to the registry?
Probably, how does that work? You don't have to record it like a subdivision, but it's not a bad thing to do. If you're recording it to registry. And that would really be up to the applicant, I would think, the security he's looking for. If you're comfortable just keeping a paper copy.
I can just go and file them, stay there.
So my law would go.
At the registry.
For the registry.
So if your place burned down, it's in a fireproof safe, both.
That's your, that's your call.
Yeah, talk to Dana about it.
Yeah.
And if he recommends it, we'll know that when you come in with one.
Talk to Dana and see what happens.
Well, that's what I'm... Dana and I have gotten too close lately. He likes my wallet.
There you go.
Sorry, am I all set?
Yep.
You are, thank you, have a very good evening.
And one best practical location.
Before we get to that, let's just tick these off. Under old business, we have the Whitmans, who will be conditional use permit for daycare. They're scheduled to be here June 6th. Darlene Kim and Nick, Nick, her son, Livery Hill, Livery Hill Farm Road, conditional use modification. Their public hearing is also June 6th. And we do have some new business to discuss evidently.
Didn't we vote on the timber harvesting, anyway?
We did that, we did that one.
Yeah, but for the official public hearing.
I thought you didn't vote on it until after the public hearing in case something changed. You voted to, remember, we had to have it up to the selectman in February.
Right.
And I thought you said it then. But I don't know that you voted to recommend.
It moved forward as is.
Let's move forward.
Sometimes it can change from then to now. Just to have it, that's what I was...
Just to have it in the mess.
We voted to put it on the warrant, on the warrant.
Right.
I think we did already, I mean...
Yeah, but I think it could change.
I'll vote that.
Yeah.
Right, but, I mean, I definitely feel like...
No, we, I think we got it.
My recollection was we voted saying that it's going up.
This is going forward and...
Which is a public hearings of formality.
Right.
Is what I thought. Yeah, so, but let's, let's do it if it's a matter of, what's the nancy way? But if it's a matter of making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, so.
Okay, seeing that there was no further input from the topic regarding the zoning ordinances changes regarding timber harvesting, I make a motion that we accept and put forward these changes to the zoning ordinance.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, and we have a best practical location, Ken?
Yep, so this is on Route 109, here's Monax, as you're coming from the New Hampshire side through the S curves. So it's in a tight little spot through here. This is the existing cabin. Are you guys the property owners?
Nope. We have an audience. And I would even introduce you, but I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Denise?
That's fair.
Denise.
So this is the existing camp and it's about 10 feet from the lake and it's concrete from the lake to the camp.
Wow.
There's the concrete.
There's the concrete.
Yeah, and that's the camp right there as is. In this instance, where it's a dog-conforming lot, your requirement is 50 feet from the center line of the right of way that would back them right up to Route 109. They put them right into this area here. I think we all know where this area is, tremendous amount of traffic in through this area. We're looking at the site as this seemed to be the better location right in this area with the septic going there, trying to leave as much of the buffer in place as we could, sound, noise and every other thing. And the property owners do want to, there just happens to be a nice flat spot kind of cleared out currently for the septic. So, we'll look at that one. So, right now, we show it as the house being right there, but we're lacking the patio, which really goes right up to zero. They're looking at removing most of the patio. There'd be about three feet of sidewalk, for a better term, because it's kind of attached to a small retaining wall. Once you start with one, and I think they probably will end up removing all of it eventually, but it would leave about three feet and then it would all be moved back. It's currently about eight feet to zero there. They're looking at trying to get it 56 feet back and getting it off the sideline. So this one's kind of unique because there is room to move it back, but by the time you bring in the septic in, in this case, we usually don't look at leaving a buffer or trees to be in influence, but if we did bring them back to the 50 feet, they'd be right in the way. They have been approached by the state, that the state is widening the road here and they're going to be buying some property or taking some property. I asked for a plan and it's changed two or three times. So then they know the state's going to do something, but they don't have anything in writing from the state or a plan yet of what it is.
About how much of their property would it be influenced on?
Would be influenced by that.
According to the multiple plans, Ken, is it like...
It's coming into about this area here to straighten that out there, so...
We're talking 40 feet or something from the center line?
And that's what's unique with our ordinance. We go from the center line and the right of way there, or it's, I think it's 66 through there, so 33. Two thirds of our setback would be that anyways. Commercial, we look at 75 from Route 109 anyways, so...
The state's going to take that, Ken, and they're probably taking 100 feet, so it'll be 50 feet in the center.
Yeah, yeah. We think it would be just about up into this area here, so they've got the septic. The septic hopefully is not in, within the right of way, but...
The property next to it's going to have a problem.
Yeah, but the property aside of it is going to have a problem.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at that.
So there's an existing septic that's going to remain in place?
No, they've got a brand new one designed.
But some of it hasn't been put in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be installed.
And that would be? We still will.
Do you have some visuals that do that?
So are we going to do these forms eventually for this?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So this is, would be the rear of the house right there, that's the flat spot, so that's the distance that would be there from the back of their camp to Route 109.
As it is today.
As it is proposed, that would be the rear.
I mean, 109, 109 is today.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's that little flat spot right there. So they're really trying to save these few big trees. They probably won't save much of this little, but definitely save all that vegetation back there.
It's like a friendly white, so you...
It's a beauty, right? Exactly, yeah, as you get back. So this would be the septic area here, this would be the back of the house. That's the existing back of the house now, that would be the front right there. So this one was kind of unique because on the map, there's plenty of room to move it back. And I guess we see that quite often, but there's a reason why not. And I think with this one here, Route 109 would be significant to not push them all the way back up to.
Right, right. Especially since we don't know what the state's going to do. How much the action is...
I know they had a couple of public hearings here in the past five, six, seven years with these plans and they had them up on the wall and then they scrapped the whole thing. I know the last time they lacked all the data they had and sent the survey and cruised back out and resurveyed the whole thing, which didn't make any sense because the data doesn't change.
That was most of the rupture and change of the midsection?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the way the state operates, you know, they might move the whole road.
That's what they don't want to do, but it's...
They want to straighten the curve.
So they can come back any five of them.
Yeah, and we're going from zero to somewhat, zero to 56.
Why would, why would they take it from that side of the road where that curve is? Yeah, that doesn't make sense. That's a very good point.
Might be for a slope or something. If the grade of the highway changes, the slope could go further.
You would think they would do that. Yeah. That would make more sense.
But that's, that's all high, the elevation pulls up very, very quickly.
Yeah, that's probably, and it does go up quite a bit.
And the other side, they can just put fill in that.
Yeah, it is, right.
I'm not saying I agree with it.
And none of the states would cancel their projects because of...
Cost and lack of manpower.
Yeah, yeah.
So at 56 seemed reasonable to me, and as you get back, like Gavin was saying, it's getting wetter and wetter and wetter, so. It could be 20 years or never, depending on if that's the most important project due to this funding.
And they just repaved that section? Oh, that's it, it's going to go 20 years if they just repave it?
I mean, the state doesn't consider 109 the secondary road, so... I mean, the state does consider 109 the secondary road, so. So it's, but not, if it isn't priority road like 202, 111.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, they're, they're the number-one priority, this road here is number two.
Interesting. I didn't see it also. You didn't see it?
Which is a plant.
But you can tell by the white.
Maybe it's. Oh, really?
It's actually going really fast.
What happened to the work on the camp up in the last thirty years?
It's too much to do.
No, no, it was a camp.
It was a Saturday.
It was thirty percent?
Cause it was like a.
When they moved back.
When they did fast?
Yeah.
Thirty percent?
Yeah.
I go off the stone, roll my cars.
Can pull off the road, change the tire.
All right.
Fifty-six, fifty-six feet, traffic.
I'd rather get in with them.
I think it could have been part of Gavin's vision, Paul.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Nothing on the left?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, where's the wild one? Where is it?
Uh, right there.
Under the car.
Oh, I lied. Right there.
Right, where the, the house will be moved to another place?
No, it's, it's right by the lake, so.
Okay. And they don't want to move it over, huh?
The house over into this area?
Yeah.
Um, this area is really more wet, the stream comes into this and it's got that area into there.
I didn't see the stream there, so.
Yeah, it, that's the one that crosses the road, falls down through.
Is that their property line is the stream right there?
On the backside of this, yeah.
Well, that's where their property line is, that funny little.
With that little hook in it?
Yeah.
What's that, what's that white box right there?
That one there? Looks like an Eiko camp.
Probably marijuana.
To grow the cellar. Looks like it's these people here, you know?
Yeah. Someone's camper.
All we got?
That's all we got.
I wonder if she has a question?
Few questions. So, do we have anything, have any paperwork, anything on the matter?
Oh, if you want. Okay.
Hey, we got it.
Same stuff we had set up there, you know?
Well, we can just, uh, we'll get them together. Don't you know we all like pictures?
Well, I know.
But the, the septic isn't, well, it seems like the septic is more, we want to make sure that thing's not too gross for 109, so what's the proposed setback on this?
Thirty-five feet.
From the edge of 109?
Yeah, the right of way.
From the edge of the right of way?
Yeah.
So, and we assume the state is going to.
Go more than that?
Yeah.
Well, they say.
Well, okay.
If they did, the state would.
The state would have to.
Buy the septic.
They would pay for it then, yeah.
Yeah, so there'd be no harm, no foul to that.
Yeah.
Right. And, and I do, looking at, at this picture, which I've been, you know, a thousand words, I, I can see where, wow, if that were done, it would be wonderful, but the retaining wall, I can see where they're, they're talking about leaving three feet of that.
No, I just made that out there. You want to give me two other dollars?
I don't know.
I go in and I don't want to check, that was a killing. She's growing.
Everybody feels sorry.
Who caught that frog?
I was. And if you can look at the front side of your eyes. That's what you want to see, oh my god. Bring it on.
We could do the natural.
Will we, Fieldy? Mr. and Mrs. Fieldy.
It's all natural. Okay.
Yeah.
Is it, is it seasonal?
Currently.
And the septic's a seasonal? The septic's a seasonal?
That's currently. How, how they have to do it, which is odd from the state, you have to put it in seasonally. Once it's in, then you can come in for a seasonal conversion. They won't do a seasonal conversion until the septic's actually installed. And they can't do it all on one form, we have to do it on two separate forms.
Well, that's because it's the state. I understand it. Now I understand it, it's two fees, two.
Yeah, because originally, till we have trouble, we were doing it all on one form and having them do the seasonal conversion and install the septic and have a growth permit.
They put in a foundation, Ken?
Uh, frost wall, filling it up as, with a slab.
So they're just moving it back?
And ripping it down, building a new place.
Did you say that? Did I miss that? No, you didn't miss it. Okay, so it is a tear-down.
Tear-down rebuild, yeah. Which at that point gets it safer, meets today's standards with the building code, energy efficient.
Yeah, we're getting rid of a lot of concrete.
Yeah.
Which is always.
Gets re-vegetated. Originally, they were saying all the concrete was coming, but when we looked at kind of how the, the front three feet was kind of attached to the retaining wall and poured around the trees, um, they think they may leave that there. But I think once they look at it, that all the retaining wall will probably come out. It's not much there.
Down the trees.
Yeah, and it, I don't.
What's the slope on that?
At the retaining wall side? It goes from zero behind it and kind of humps up. A lot of Wilson Lake is like that, is like a.
It's pretty flat for, yeah, but then on the other side of 109 it goes out.
Yeah, to get out of there.
So the three steps of cement steps are coming out?
No, cement steps would stay.
That's what you said, those would stay, that's the new picture.
Oh, true. Oh, I got right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the water table's low enough so they can dig down four feet?
They're going to dig down four feet but fill it with dirt and pour a slab at grade.
Why would they put a basement?
They're going to fill it with dirt and pour a slab at, at grade.
But it's probably too high.
So, the basement would just be frost protection for the, for the building to sit on.
I guess Mike, Mike won't ask again. Is the water table down there?
Twelve inches, maybe sixteen.
So you couldn't dig down four feet?
They'll dig down four foot, put a frost wall in, fill it with dirt, compact it and pour, uh, concrete at grade, just like the new house they're doing, uh, down by the ball fields. They did the same thing with that house.
And when they had all the stuff outside.
Which is common, a lot of the south area, they're all on slabs with small frost walls. Um, up here, you say it's on a slab and nobody wants to deal with it, but one feels we all need basements.
All right. So, you have the conditional use form, I think. Best practical, best practical. Yeah, first. What do you think?
I think it's reasonable for the site for fifty-six feet.
Okay, so, Nipses.
Where they take that cement up, Ken, they don't vegetate that.
Yeah, and with the existing houses, they'll have to re-vegetate as well. Um, we'll have them work with Southern Maine Regional, this is this contractor kind of works with for a vegetation plan.
You will, okay.
All the state's looking for is grass. Yeah, the state calls, uh, grass vegetation.
So, maybe we should just put in a note that says, uh, any trees that are removed behind the camp, or we'll have some, some put in the front?
That's how we'll work it, uh, on the relocations, we'll do a one-to-one ratio versus using the point system and looking at the grid. Cause once you get behind the camp, we're almost teetering the hundred-foot zone. We'll almost be outside the hundred-foot zone, so.
Also tree removed outside the hundred?
Uh, now you would.
Does it tree to the point system?
No, you can remove up to forty percent of what you have left out there. Yeah, but, uh, this individual contractor usually, um, landscaping is what finishes the whole project up, so they like to do a lot of, um, bark, mountain, ring vegetation type stuff to, to make it pop up, kind of, so to say. And this one here, with all, with all, between the concrete being removed and the house being removed, they'll have quite a bit to do out on the front side, you know?
And it doesn't like that, like, they're not removing any trees anyways, just.
No, most of it, um, yeah. Yeah.
So, any questions, anybody have any thing they want to do? How was that? Name's again?
Director, Vanessa's gone down?
Yes.
Fieldy.
Fieldy, where is it 109?
My wife put him on a diet, wasn't this one?
They addressed.
I did the same, wow.
So, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty-three, thirty-eight, Route 109, short.
Oh, thank you.
Twenty-three, thirty-eight, okay.
Map and lot?
Yeah, what is it? Map and lot?
You can tell you.
One forty-one?
One forty-one.
Nine.
No, oh, no. So.
And then name, something.
Fieldy, Fieldy?
So. Two Es.
Technically three, yes.
Fieldy. Fieldy.
Fieldy, L-E-Y.
So it's a tear-down rebuild.
Tear-down rebuild. We'll put the, um, sort of standard, um, notes on.
Yeah.
Conditions, uh, vegetation, anything, the other one to one.
Stone water.
Stone water, yeah.
I don't know what we would want to do there, but it's such a, it looks like a lot of pools out there, but you might want to do something.
I would think.
They're not, you know, just, they're not parking any pool or.
Yeah, cause it looks like that's just exactly what happens. Because that water comes in from, towards right towards the house. Interesting. All right, so, shall we entertain a motion to accept best practical location application from the Fieldys? Twenty-three eighty, uh, twenty-three, thirty-eight, Route 109. A tear-down rebuild.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six?
Yeah.
Fifty-six, no closer than fifty-six.
No.
To the water?
To the water.
Twelve feet from the side?
Twelve feet from the side.
I'll leave a few more words after that's over.
We're going to be here late tonight, people.
The camp on, whatever the address is, 109.
Yeah, twenty-three, thirty-eight, Route 109, yeah, block one forty-one dash oh oh nine.
What do we want to do with it?
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be a real.
Best practical location, uh, no closer than, what was it, fifty-six?
Yeah.
Um, from the water, twelve, um, twelve, from, from.
From the, uh, side.
Side. It's a thirty percent. There you go, thirty percent, it's going over thirty percent, right? No?
No, it would be.
It's going to be within, okay. With a thirty percent. Did we cover everything?
No.
Sounds weird, sounds like it.
All right, so you got your motion up.
Okay, you got your first, you got your second. You got your.
You're going to go the sidewalk?
I don't think it's necessary, um, how does everybody else feel? No.
I don't think it is.
Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Yeah, unanimous. Very good. And do we have any other new business that?
It's all one, yeah.
I just put on your agenda that there's going to be a class coming up, I don't hope that any of you.
Uh, yeah, um.
It's a, it's a good class.
I, well, we get done.
Oh, we did sign?
I, I, I already signed up, yeah. Yeah, and, and I have to, so.
Which class was that?
This is the, um, the erosion.
The erosion.
Oh, bad Wakefield? Well, we have it here.
It's here, it's here. Um, I don't, I don't know where you got the forty-dollar charge.
It was thirty-five.
It's thirty-five.
Oh, I remember you paid thirty-five. I saw forty-two.
Oh, I saw thirty-five. I paid thirty-five as well.
Twenty-five.
Well, either way.
The stream crossing was twenty-five, right?
The state charges twenty-five for the guy to come down and all the data, and when we were going to do it, we were going to add fifteen dollars to it to bring us to, you know, forty. But at Wakefield said they'd sponsor it. And at that time, I thought that meant it was twenty-five, but they're just going to come with lunch.
Who's going to, who's going to teach it?
Uh, the state.
Is, um, John McLean coming down? He heads that, that division up.
Yeah, the erosion control?
Right.
Yeah, so the gentleman that used the cottage just retired this year, so I don't know who the new person is.
It might be him, though.
And we needed to get the new, um, field director for active Wakefield Watership trained, so we had to have the class for him.
Okay.
So we thought we'd open it up versus sending him to, I think the only rail ones was up in Bangor or something like that, so instead of sending him up, say he was willing to come down and.
All right, so in case anybody hasn't read it, it is basic and advanced erosion control practice is class, and it will be here at the town hall. It will be on the twenty-ninth, which is also candidate's night, when we get to meet all our candidates. So, plan on a long day if you take the class.
It says, um, twenty-five dollars and lunch will be provided. I actually overpaid him, I paid him thirty-five total.
Well, the application I had, that kept on Ken's desk, said four.
Then why did they tell me fifty-seven? This makes no sense, right?
Cause of your t-shirt.
This is my t-shirt.
Oh, yeah.
There it go.
That's really lovely.
I love the t-shirt.
I love that guy.
All right, so, two of us are going and we hope more of you will join us. Good.
Did you be interested?
Twelve, five.
Different flyers.
You want to share the flyers for you?
No, I'm a girl.
We, we, like, the last time we went to a class, I shared all my flyers with somebody, but we can make copies.
The Z on the half?
Yeah.
You brought it to me at the meantime and it was at two o'clock and she says, oh, it's upstairs. In Wakefield.
Did you get the other one that was in your box over there?
Yeah.
By the one nine.
Yeah.
Bruce and I went to these, uh, classes. And it was very, very good.
Or did we just make the motion, keep it forward?
We did, and it was everybody, it was.
All the class support.
Yeah, it was class support.
Of course, everybody really tells me exactly how much money it really is. This is contingent on, my wife let me have this amount of money.
The, um, applications at, um, twenty-five, of course, I, I was an idiot and paid them thirty-five. And you told me thirty-five, so I don't leave you.
So, you paid ten dollars too much, you paid ten dollars too much.
Somebody is going to have to.
I give that a five dollars.
Guys, everyone, everyone, Port Virginia is sitting here.
No, that's fine, I'm enjoying this. Comedy Central tonight.
Comedy Central tonight. We try to be, um, we try to be efficient.
Yes, you are.
Entertaining. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please don't jump out of your seats.
Um, I did want to mention those.
I would like to, um, adjourn.